So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And this is the regular city council meeting for Minutrista for July 15th. Just a friendly reminder, if you have electronic devices with you, please turn them off or on airplane mode or on silent so they don't disrupt the meeting. First order of business, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, welcome all of you for being here this evening. Can't imagine why you're all here, but welcome all of you. With that, I'm going to start out with a few introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. To my left are council members Pam Mortenson, Mike Molliter, John Schumperlin, Shannon Bruce, and on the end we have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Fausky. Then we have also on the end, we have our city clerk, Chris Lindquist, and then our director of administration is Cassandra Tabor. And behind those two ladies, we have our public work superintendent Gary Peters, and also with us this evening, we have with WSB, Lee Gustafson, thank you. And then to my right, we have staff members, Mike Broney, our city administrator, Brian Grimm, our finance director, David Abel, our community director, community development director, and then we have Paul Falls is coming, but before him, we have Ron Beatty, our city attorney with Kennedy and Graven. And then, right now, coming to the podium, we have Paul Falls, our chief of police. Thank you. Okay. We have a lot of people signed up this evening, so we'll hear from all of you. With that, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Schumperlin, second by Miss Bruce. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So our first order of business is our special presentations. The water tower schedule, nobody's here from S E H, are they?
Correct.
Okay.
I've got an explanation.
Okay. We do have more seats in the front here if you care to sit. All right.
So mayor, council, we were to have a couple of representatives here from S E H, but there was some confusion on schedules, so they will not be here, and they promised they will be here on August 3rd. But nonetheless, we did have a chance to meet with those folks to at least talk about a tentative schedule. I know this might be a little hard to read, but it's small, and so we can certainly give you a copy of this. We just got this this morning, so it wasn't able to be included in the council packet that went out last week. Essentially, it's a schedule that talks about all the tasks that need to be done on the left side, and then the start and end dates for that, each one of those. There's a break in there for the winter break of 2021 winter. So we hope to begin some preliminary design here in July, if they haven't started already. We'll be working on that, or they'll be working on that, and they'll be bringing that back to the council here later this year for approval, and we'll go out for bids, et cetera. And then if all else, if all goes well, we should have the new water tower online by the end of October of 2021. That's a typical timeline. It's roughly 20 months, thereabouts, for construction. All the details that go with this will be provided once we get that far, but we thought we'd at least give you a kind of a tentative timeline. And as I said, I apologize for their not being here, kind of mix-up in communication, but we thought we would at least give you this, and again, we can send this to you. And if you have questions that come up between now and then, we can certainly have them available, and they will be here on August 5th, which is the meeting, next meeting, three weeks from tonight, so.
Okay. Yeah, certainly, if they could, if you could get that scheduled out to the council, that would be great. I had, just have a couple comments. So I know that this year, there was a sales tax exemption bill that didn't pass. I know that the municipalities can do sales tax exemption, but the way it's set up currently is really very, it takes a lot of time and effort. So hopefully, that that new bill will pass to make it easier, and that could save us a lot of money.
And I've noted that, mayor and council, and I will bring that up with Miles Jensen, who's their lead for all of our water treatment projects that we've done over the last few years, and I'll discuss that with him, and we'll see what else we can do to find out some information that'll hopefully help them.
And we were able to get that on the water treatment plants.
Right.
We, S E H filed the paperwork.
Yeah. It's just a lot of paperwork, so if we can, then this new bill can cut down on that, that would be really great. But the other thing, too, to note is that I think 2020 is a bonding year, so I think we could, it might be worth at least having a conversation with our representatives to see if there might be any state dollars available, so. Okay? Any other questions? Comments? All right. So next, we have our second quarter financial update.
Yes. Madam mayor and council, so this is the regular quarterly update that's in your packet. Basically, for halfway point of the year where our revenues and expenditures are tracking about where they should be, they're both at about 49% of, when you look at actual compared to budget. The revenue report was on page four of your packet. You can see that the one item I'll note is that the building permit revenue still seems to be pretty strong. I think we've got about 71, 72 new home permits that we've, year-to-date, so that's, the housing market seems to be pretty strong still. Otherwise, we've gotten our first half tax settlement in and those type of items, so that tracks down to basically collecting about 50%, just shy of at the midpoint. On the expenditure side, same type of thing, you'll see where most items were around that, up 45 to 50% other than some of the items that we've either paid the full amount, like for some of our insurance, or like the fire contract, we've paid through three quarters of the year to St. Bonia and Mount when we contract with them. Nothing else really to note there as far as the financial report. Maybe I'll just open it up to any questions from the council. Like I said, I think we're tracking well at this point, and hopefully that'll continue for the rest of the year, as we'll have the third quarter update, and obviously we'll be talking budget in August and September, so this won't be the last numbers. You'll be seeing a lot more numbers over the next, over the coming weeks, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Any questions of the council? Miss Bruce?
Mr. Grimm, was your previous comment about the fourth item down under revenue, where it says business licenses at 341%? I'm just wondering why that is so, we should be tracking at 50% as 341? I'm just curious.
Well, and we don't really have a lot of, that's that item where we budgeted a couple thousand, it's just 6,800, correct?
Right. But June's income was $4,700, and that's, I'm just curious why, do you know why that was?
Oh, it was the license for the buddy boy along Highway 7.
Oh, the restaurant on 7.
Yep, that's why, so.
Okay. Because we don't have that many businesses.
Oh, no, usually, so that's why.
I couldn't figure out where that was coming from.
So this was more of an anomaly, or very rare, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have a couple. When do we get our fiscal disparities generally? Do you know timing of the year?
That would have been with our, the first week of July, so then, that's why that just didn't make the cut.
Right. Okay.
The first half, we would have gotten in early July.
Okay. And then the 110,000 under police aid?
We get that in September, I believe. It's, yeah, it's a couple months out yet.
And that's formula-based, that's monies from the state, I believe?
Correct, yeah. Based on.
And based on our?
Number of officers and that type of, per the formula, how they allocate money to fund departments across the state, or at least help fund, I guess I should say.
And then there was a $20,000 task force budget revenue. Chief, do you know, did that bill pass that was in the House, do you know?
Madam mayor, members of council, no, it did not. As presented, it did not, which is a good thing. They're going to take a much closer look at that.
Okay.
And try and fix what needs fixing, if anything, and then bring it back so that it works for everybody.
For everyone. All right. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? All right. Then that concludes our update for the second quarter financial. Thank you, Mr. Grimm. So now we will move on to why you all are here. We have a lot of people signed up this evening. So a couple things. The rules here are, one, civility. Be respectful. Address myself. This is not going to be a debate. You can make your comments. We will accept all of your comments, regardless if we like them or not. And we won't, again, we're not going to engage in any kind of debate this evening. So you'll have three minutes, and we're going to keep it to those three minutes because there's a lot of people here, and everybody has an opportunity to voice their opinions. And the other thing is, you need to come to the podium, and you need to speak directly into the mic, so it does go on camera and on tape, and you need to state your name and your address for the record. So if we're all in agreement on that, I'm going to start with Mary Leclair.
Good evening. My name is Mary Leclair. I'm a new three-year resident of Minutrista. I apologize, I'm on some medication, that's why my voice is shaking. I have lived here, as I said, three years. I waited 25 years to move to Minutrista, and when I finally got here, I was so excited. I never dreamt that I'd have to worry about my city council. It never even occurred to me. But you have my attention. I don't understand why Lisa, Pam, and John are still sitting on this board with campaign finance violations. At the very least, it was your responsibility. And in addition, your treasurers should have caught that. Most treasurers would have been sent money back. In addition, the three of you did this at the same time. That feels very contrived to me. That feels very planned, and I'm very uncomfortable with that. I would ask that you would resign, step down, apologize to Minutrista, and let us get our faith back in our city council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could we have your address, please, for the record?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
6905 Crosby Court, C-R-O-S-B-Y. Okay? You know Minutrista.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. So next, we have Charlie Hales.
My name is Charlie Hales, 5100 County Road 151, here in Minutrista. I'd like to address Mayor Whalen, council members Mortenson and John Schumperlin. After I read the OAH findings, it's clear to me that there's an aggressive campaign that's being led to misrepresent what the rulings actually stated in an effort to mislead our representatives, or our, the people that live in this town, to what actually happened. One clear example of this is the recent Star Tribune article that came out. They stated that there were possible criminal charges that were being brought against you guys. However, the ruling explicitly stated that this was not being forwarded to the county attorney, which clearly stated that there was no criminal conduct. However, this was also consistent with the statement from the ruling that found that there was no fraud or deceit from your guys' campaign, despite what everybody else is saying. The Star Tribune was incorrect, but more importantly, they lied to everybody that lives in Minutrista, and now we have a lot of people that are upset here with you guys when they don't have all the facts. The three of you received contributions from dozens of residents, and that may have given you an advantage, yes, but that's because you guys have shown a track record, and the things that you've done on council have been proven to be very popular. Just look at the 80% approval rating that you guys have. Well, my family and I donated to your guys' campaigns. We were told very clearly what the amount was that we were able to donate, and our donations were made public for everyone to see. Apparently, we should have been required to write individual checks to each of your campaigns instead of us writing one check and that being separated by you guys like we requested. It seems like a reasonable finding and an honest mistake at that, but this is far cry from the criminal conspiracy that's being pushed by your political opponents. Next time, when you guys are running again, we will separate each of your guys' candidates' checks, and we'll make sure that your guys' support is not wavered. This honestly reminds me of Nancy Pelosi's wrap-up smear campaign that they did to Justice Kavanaugh. Throw as many allegations as you can against the people in the hope that they step down. This is honestly why good people don't want to run for politics.
I'm going to have to interrupt you, Mr. Hales, because your three minutes are up, so thank you very much. We're going to keep everybody to the three minutes as closely as we possibly can. Thank you. Next, we have Bill Bushnell. Again, don't forget to give us your address as well as your name.
I am Bill Bushnell. I live at 940 Maple Crest Drive, Minutrista. Been there for 24 years now. I would like to attempt to bring some perspective here and hopefully put this whole discussion in focus, if I can. To begin with, what we're talking about here, you're certainly correct, has nothing to do with criminal activity. This is an administrative error. I made a mistake in my taxes, and I'm not in jail. They just took the money, and everybody's happy. That's what this is. It's an administrative error. In fact, to further document that that was, that was the case, the three people involved, well, the entire group involved, made every effort to do exactly what they were supposed to do according to law. They consulted with the state, said, what are the rules? How do we follow them? Now, somewhere in that chain, an error was made. And again, to the credit of these people, as soon as the error was discovered, pointed out, they immediately corrected it, rectified it. Also, to show what their intentions were, there was absolutely no attempt at any time to hide, cover up, obfuscate anything that was being done here. Every single dollar that was contributed was reported. They went beyond what the state law requires. You don't have to report political contributions under, I believe it's $100, but they reported every $1 contribution they got. So that indicates what their intentions were. I think the important thing here to remember is that this is something that happened five years ago. Now, the reason that's important is because since then, there has been an election, and we, the citizens, re-elected all three of these people. Because obviously, we're happy with the way they have governed our city with the organization and management they have brought us. So I think that's to their credit, and it's something that we would like, just, I don't know what I can say about that, other than obviously, the citizens are behind you. So I think anybody that wants to continue to beat a five-year-old dead horse over this is probably the person that needs to retire from the room and let our city leaders get back to what they need to do.
Okay. Let's, let's, I'm sorry. Let's hold off on the applause, please. Thank you. And Mr. Bushnell, thank you for your comments, and your three minutes are up.
I'm cut short.
Yeah, I know. Three minutes goes by fast.
You have important, real work to do, and I'd like to get back to that, play political games.
All right. So next on the list, we have Karen Danielson.
Karen Danielson, I live at 1090 Deer Creek Road in Minutrista. And I'm going to try really hard to, I just want to say that I was a treasurer who volunteered to help the mayor and the council members. I really, truly did not take this lightly. I contacted Campaign Finance Disclosure Board, I talked with people at Secretary of State, I talked extensively with Terry Harsted, who was our current city clerk, I spoke with the banker, I talked to so many people, and this is how we thought we could do it since we were supporting three candidates. There was absolutely no ill-doing in this. Every dollar that was collected was recorded very diligently. I kept extremely comprehensive spreadsheets. Anybody can see them online. I just, I want to apologize for everything that they're going through for an error. I volunteered, and I'm just, I'm so very sorry. You know, after going through this whole process, I've been involved in this for seven months now. I have a full-time job. These people have jobs. I mean, this is crazy. I just, I just hope everyone can understand that this, there was no concealment. Everything is there. In the future, we will collect three checks instead of one. We have one check and a donor direction form that said these checks will be divided by three ways. If you don't want your check divided by three ways, let us know. I think we, I tried very, very hard, and I, again, just want to apologize, and I hope that we can just get back to city business, and it was five years ago, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danielson. Next, we have Justin Zanenko.
Justin Zanenko, 900 County Road 92, Minutrista. I have a letter from John Lumen, who cannot be here this evening. Dear Mayor Whalen, it has come to my attention that some residents of our city have raised a concern about a minor technical issue concerning the campaign funding in the recent local elections. It is incomprehensible that someone would not only raise the issue, but go so far to suggest that the mayor and two council members resign. As a campaign contributor, I have every confidence that there was no malice intent in any campaign funding, and that the desire of the members running for the election was only and always to serve the residents of Minutrista in the best possible manner. Having served on the council for a number of years, I know the dedication involved in giving your time and expertise to our city is my feeling that Lisa and Pam and John are the best example of what a mayor and councilperson should be. Because of a prior commitment, I cannot be there this evening, but feel free to read this at the council meeting, should you wish. Best, John Lumen. And let me say, as a resident of Minutrista, what a ridiculous moment for us to waste our time and our dollars on something that has nothing to do with this at all. It's something much deeper and much more ill-intent, and as me, living in Minutrista for many years, it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zanenko. Next, we have Elizabeth Husstead.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Husstead.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Then we have Jane Norling.
Jane Norling, 5450 Ridgewood Cove in Minutrista. And my comments are also addressed tonight to Mayor Whalen and council members Mortenson and Schumperlin. During, I'm going to talk about the more recent election. During the 2018 election, I submitted a complaint to the OAH, that's the State Office of Administrative Hearings, against a candidate who was ultimately not elected. My complaint was for technical issues, as was yours. That candidate was found to be in violation of the campaign finance rules and paid a fine, just as you three did. I am not accusing that candidate of being a criminal, and you, none of, the three of you are criminals. I do not believe he intentionally or willfully violated the rules, and I know you did not. Prior to the election, I was one of those that made several calls to state offices, asking for clarification on some of the advanced technicalities. Some of these were later included in the filings against you. I learned the campaign finance rules are complex, they vary based on the size of the city, even the type of the governing mode, and even at the state level, I was given contradictory opinions on how to interpret some of the finer points. We picked the best that we could, and nobody, before the complaint was filed, said that we could not do it the way we did. When reading the complaint against you, this is greatly exaggerated effort to smear you with numerous accusations, many of which were rejected by the administrative judges before your hearing even started. And now there appears to be a concerned effort to mislead our residents about what the administrative ruling actually did say. Excuse me. In the future, I believe candidates will be able to complete accurate financial filings because of the items that were clarified by these rulings. The Office of Administrative Hearings, as has also been said, clearly stated, they are taking no further action or recommending any further action. As your constituent, I wish I could apologize for all the false information being distributed to our other residents about you and these filings, and that is our democracy. So I urge you to continue to focus on the real problems, the long-term planning our city requires, so that we can continue as a place where our residents want to raise their children and retire. Thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you. So next, we have Kathleen Refkin.
I'm a mayor, council members. I'm Kathleen Refkin. I live at 6816 Minnehaha Court. I'm here to make a statement related to the campaign finance violations by the three members of the city council. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and several of my neighbors who have voiced similar concerns to me, which has compelled me to be here today. We are deeply concerned about the actions of Mayor Whalen, Councilman Mortenson, and Councilman Schumberlin. Your complete disregard for campaign finance laws shows to the residents of Minutrista your blatant disrespect for the law. You knowingly and willfully committed campaign finance violations, and then had the audacity to allege you didn't know what was going on and state it was a technical error. You appear to think residents of Minutrista are naive. Residents of Minutrista can no longer trust you to uphold the laws of the state of Minnesota and the city of Minutrista. We cannot trust you to act in a non-biased way. Every time you vote on issue or funding for a project, we'll be forced to wonder whether or not someone has paid you off to vote a certain way. The residents of Minutrista deserve better, and therefore, you should resign from your positions. Should you feel that your unethical actions do not warrant resignation, an independent citizens review board or council should be established to last four to six years to guarantee that you are not receiving financial incentives for your votes. There should also be an open, independent audit of all decisions made by Mayor Whalen, Councilman Mortenson, and Councilman Schumberlin as they relate to contracts and spending. Also, any contracts that have been entered into while you were violating the law should be reviewed by an independent third party for any outside interest as related to the organization or Minutrista. The residents of Minutrista deserve transparency from all their elected officials. Without your resignation or additional oversight, this would be impossible to attain. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Next, we have George Zanenko.
I happen not talking loud enough, so I'll try to talk loud. George Zanenko, 900 County Road 92, Minutrista, and a residence for about 32 years. I'd like to address Mayor Whalen, council members Mortenson, and Schumperlin. I donated to your campaigns. I wrote a check, and I gave written instruction that this was to be divided equally among each and every one of you. The Office of Administrative Hearings ruled that you should have required me to write a separate check to each of your campaigns. I would have gladly have done that, had I known that I was supposed to do that. But I'm not here to criticize the administrative ruling that was issued, but I really don't understand why this is even an issue. You would have received the same donation from the same number of residents, whether they wrote one check or separate checks, because you had a lot of support, tremendous amount of support. Unfortunately, as this is politics, you will receive a lot of unfair criticism, each and every one of you. You're being attacked because you have kept the city on a positive track, and that's always going to bring out criticisms. I want you guys to keep up the good work. You've been doing a very, very good job. I also want to say that for 12 years that I sat up behind that desk, that eight of those years I worked right with Lisa Whalen, Mayor Whalen, and we didn't always agree. We had some good debates at times, and we didn't vote the same way. But I've always respected the mayor. She's always done a very, very good job in presenting her viewpoints, and she's always worked very hard. And I think under her leadership, she's made Minutrista what Minutrista is, a very desirable community to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zanenko. So next, we have Jerry Wigan. So next, we have Jerry Wigan.
Jerry Wigan, 6841 Cardinal Court Drive, Minnetrista. I've been a resident for 31 years. I listen to everything that's taken place here so far. There's a lot of misinformation. We can't forget that, first of all, the three-judge panel handed down the maximum allowable fine of $5,000. Now, they evidently felt it was pretty serious, charges. And as far as possible criminal charges go, that probe is still ongoing, very much alive. It's not a dead issue, and much, much may come of that. Now, a secret meeting was held in January of 2018 to discuss John T. Schumberlin filling the city council seat vacated by Patricia Thole several months later. This meeting was admitted to by Councilmember T. Schumberlin at your recent hearing by a three-judge panel, which found Mayor Wayland, Pam Mortenson, and John T. Schumberlin and others in violation of Minnesota campaign laws. The purpose of the January meeting was to discuss his filling Councilmember Thole's seat. Then you staged an invitation to the public to interview for that soon-to-be-vacated seat when the decision was already made. Where's all the transparency that you promised when you were campaigning, or was that just more BS? Now, in addition to a probe in much more serious possible criminal charges, you have violated the Minnesota open-meeting laws, which will likely bring additional legal charges against you, and more discredit to you, your family, your friends, and our city. Have you no shame? Is it really any wonder why the public, business leaders, former elected officials, and even mayors from neighboring cities have demanded your immediate resignation? You have tarnished our city's reputation for long enough already, and it appears there's much more damage to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wigan. Next, we have Amy Webster.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Amy Webster. I live at 1260 Scott Drive. And I'm here...I'd like to address Mayor Wayland, Councilmember Schumberlin, and Councilmember Mortenson. I'm here in full support of you continuing in your positions, representing the city of Minnetrista. Some of you I know better than others, but I have been following along as we have been building the city, and pleased with the direction that we're going. I'm a big facts person. I'm a facts and figures and data person, so I went out and I downloaded the reports from the state commission, the OAH, and I read it as an independent party and just said, "What is this saying about people?" if I didn't know anything about the situation. And what I came to in doing that in comparison to what I saw in some of the news coverage, or some of maybe rumors on the street that you hear in town, is that very clearly, this is an administrative error. So there were no criminal or intent to deceive the public around where finances were going. Finances were accurately reported. They were accurately recorded. The dollar amounts were accurate. People...you've heard people testify that or give voice tonight that they felt that their campaign contributions were going where they were directed. So I think we all need to step back as a city and take a deep breath, and put this in perspective of how do we move forward from here, make sure that as all of you are doing campaigns going forward, that we're understanding how that should be collected and recorded. But as a city, I think we need to step back and make sure that we are not making a mountain out of a mole here, hill here, and having good people's reputations tarnished, and also a huge loss for us and the city.
Thank you. So next, we have Peter Vickery.
Hello. My name is Peter Vickery, and for 20 years, I have lived at 5879 West Branch Road in Minnetrista. I would like to address the councilmembers Mortenson, T. Schumberlin, and Mayor Wayland. I've read the Minnesota Office of Hearings and their findings of fact, conclusion, and order regarding the 2014 election and 2018 elections. I believe that their decision points to form, not substance. By that, I mean that the campaign advice sought out from multiple credible sources turned out not to be correct. However, you all faithfully and openly reported all contributions in a manner that you believed was appropriate. I think we should all remember that the councilmembers are our neighbors and often our friends. They have not been career politicians, but rather they are all volunteers and working on our behalf. We should also reflect on the council's accomplishments in the last five years. Our water purification plants are now built and running. All of our roads have been assessed, and a schedule of maintenance and repair has been in place. And after much effort, we finally have a much-needed water tower in the works. But most importantly in my mind, we've now had in place a 10-year growth plan that will preserve Minnesota's natural setting. These accomplishments, to me, show integrity and dedication to serving us all. You have my thanks and support.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Next, we have Tom Notch.
Hello. Tom Notch. I live at 1250 Morningview Drive. I've lived here for about 35 years. And basically, I just wanted to kind of remind you guys, you've probably seen these brochures, you know, these are from when you guys were running back in '14. It says ethical, independent leadership. Basically, we're going to be, you know, restore ethical, independent leadership. I know Pam says here something about honesty and that. And this upsets me, what I've seen here. I think it's that our leaders really need to set the tone for all the city workers that work under them. They look at you as their bosses here, and basically, how can you expect them to be honest if your guys aren't really following the law, would be my take. The three judges with the Office of Administrative Hearing, as we heard, all determined that the three of you violated campaign finance laws. So while you were running the campaigns here, it's a little disturbing that, you know, it wasn't being done ethically when you're handing these out, saying how you're going to be ethical. And I do think, based on the embarrassment, distraction that your actions have caused and continue to cause the city, I am requesting your resignations from office. I believe it'll be in everyone's best interest, and also in the best interest of the city. And there's also some things that are coming out, too. When you guys were running your campaigns, you used tandem printing. That was a printer from the school district. Here you got the school district's rate, the reduced postage rate, didn't pay any sales tax on it, and that's not ethical. So there's another item. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Notch. And then we have Elroy Belgard.
Hello. My name is Elroy Belgard, and I live at 825 Game Farm Road, and I'm the reason you're all here tonight.
Well, thank you.
Because I decided to run for city council last fall, and there were two people running for two seats. And because I ran, that caused all this. Had I not run, there would have been no camp...no signs, no mailings, probably. But anyway, I decided to run, and immediately I realized I was up against a well-oiled machine. The signs went up. There were hundreds of signs all over the city, two citywide mailings from a group called R. Minnetrista. And I actually did have a problem of my own. I got a check for $800, and I didn't know that the limit was 600, but I didn't hide it. I just put it on my report that I got a check for 800 bucks. But thankfully, somebody from R. Minnetrista let me know that that was a campaign finance violation. And so I immediately apologized, paid the 200 bucks back, paid the fine, and then somebody from R. Minnetrista wrote an article in The Laker saying that maybe I wasn't right for this position because I wasn't aware of all the campaign finance laws and stuff like that. And I thought, well, maybe they're right. So then, it's revealed that R. Minnetrista is actually breaking way more campaign finance laws than I broke, and they knew. They knew what the laws were. It was intentional, and they did it, and they're doing it to hide who the money is coming from and how much the money is, and other things. And R. Minnetrista never filed a finance report, and that's where this all came about. So that's all I've got to say. I'm not sure...I'm not calling for anybody to resign, but we need to figure this out.
Mr. Belgard, I'm sorry. You're right, and your time's up. Thank you. I did miss an individual. I apologize. Elizabeth Schreiner?
I'm Elizabeth Schreiner, 7530 Susan Lane, and I've lived in Minnetrista for 34 years. Madam Mayor and Council, I am addressing my remarks to Mayor Wayland and councilmembers Mortenson and Schumberlin. I think we, the citizens, need to take a sober and judicious response to this situation. And by judicious, I mean we need to be guided by the decisions of the three case judges. And if you will permit me, I need to state what you already know and what has been said here this evening. The three judges' decision takes into consideration the fact that R. Minnetrista contacted three government agencies to learn the legal way of reporting campaign finances. Minnetrista City Clerk, Campaign Finance and Public Disclosure Board, and the Office of Secretary of State were contacted. And in spite of these efforts, there were errors in reporting those finances, and fines were issued. Campaign finance law is complicated. The judges ruled there was no evidence, quote, "no evidence" that candidates failed to keep accurate accounts of their campaign finances with the intent to conceal receipts or dispersments. Also, no referral to a county attorney was made. In other words, this is a civil matter, not a criminal matter. We, the citizens, need to be sober in our response. I watch the council meetings on YouTube. I see the three of you making every effort to get all the facts by your experienced and in-depth questioning of staff and consultants on all issues before you. I see your commitment to make the best possible decisions for all citizens of Minnetrista. In my opinion, the campaign finance situation does not rise to the level that requires you to resign. In fact, your resignation would do more harm than good for Minnetrista. I am asking you to continue to serve on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schreiner. I have nobody else signed up at this point. I will allow...okay, sure. But I do need your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Doris Crawford. I live at 3988 Turtle Road, Minnetrista.
Hold on, just a second, Doris. Doris what? Crawford?
Crawford.
Okay.
I live at 3988 Turtle Road, Minnetrista, and have lived there for 16 years. And I would like to say that this is not a new thing that has been going on with Mayor Lisa Wayland and Pam Mortenson, and, well, John Schumberlin, who is in on it now, too. I was part of the 2014 fundraiser campaign and was supporting Mark Vanderlinde. I went around distributing flyers to our neighborhood in Turtle Creek, and I had many people that were very, very angry about how the way the police station was said to have had a referendum. And I had a one man saying to me, Lisa Wayland stood right here on my doorstep and told me that there would be a referendum, and then nothing. When voting time came for this last election, or the election before, Mayor Lisa Wayland and I think it was Pam Mortenson and the other gal were on their pickup truck, on the back of the pickup truck, their hair shining in the sunshine, waving at all the voters. They were...and I don't know why they didn't know it, but my husband did. He went to the judges and said, "They're 500 feet away from the entrance to the...and that's against the law." And they were made to move. The R. Minnetrista was run by David Kolbe, and he put up things on that website that were so detrimental to Mark Vanderlinde, saying he fixed tickets. And I stood up at this podium and said, pointed out different things that there is no way. He was an honest man, and I think now he left Minnetrista because of all of it. And my brother is on the city council for Victoria, and I don't know how many of you know about that, but my father, Marvin Gregory, was one of the plaintiffs that got the three violators. That was the mayor and two councilmembers. They were charged with violation of open-meeting law.
I'm sorry. I've got to cut you off. You have three minutes, and your three minutes are up, so thank you. So with that, that concludes our persons to be heard. We have heard from everybody that's signed up. Normally, we don't respond, and I don't want to...again, this isn't going to be a debate, but I do want to make a few comments to the residents of Minnetrista. Some of the comments that were made here this evening are not accurate, but I'm not going to get into the specifics, because then we get into debate, and then we get into mudslinging, and that's not what I want. During my tenure as the mayor, I have been ethical. I haven't violated open-meeting laws. I know some people would like to think I have, but I haven't. But way back in 2014, this was now five years ago, when Pam, Patricia, and I ran for office, Karen Danielson stepped forward, and she volunteered to be our treasurer. She had never done this before, and so she thought or sought advice from multiple agencies and individuals. This was a committee for multiple candidates, which was quite different from my previous experience as an individual campaign. Based on our findings and our understanding of the laws, we structured our financials on what we believed to be totally legal. We did not hide any of the contributions or their source. To the contrary, we were very transparent, and as stated earlier this evening, we wrote all of our contributions down, even if it was just $25. We did indeed report all of our contributions. The OAH panel did determine that the checks from our contributors, regardless of our contributors' intentions, should have been made out to each of us individually, not to us collectively as R. Minnetrista. Although we disagree with their decision, we do respect it, and we take ownership of this error. We made a mistake, and we apologize to the residents of Minnetrista for that mistake. We will pay the fine, and it is not the maximum. The maximum was $5,000 per person, per incident. We will pay the fine, and it is not the maximum. The maximum was $5,000 per person, per incident. So far from the maximum. It was a fraction of that. And this is not a criminal offense. This is a technical error. And this is a civil citation. Before I close, I'd like to look at the scoreboard. So how have we been doing so far? Well, when we came on board in 2015, within record time, two new water treatment plants were up and running at a fraction of the cost that the previous council wanted to spend. We improved our citizen engagement initiatives and communications. A brand-new website was created that has more information and is more user-friendly. We now have a Facebook page. We have Twitter, email blasts, Council's Corner, and a much-improved quarterly Minatrista Messenger that's mailed out to all our households. We've added alternates to our park and planning commissions, affording more people the opportunity to get involved. We've added an annual city bus tour, a state-of-the-city address, and new events at Trista Day. We have been addressing our infrastructure and have completed many road improvement projects throughout the city. These include seal coating, mill and overlays, reclamation projects, and converting Halsted from a gravel road to a bituminous road. We've added new park amenities to Lisle Park and improved other parks with new equipment as well. A much-needed water tower in the southwest corner of our city is now in the works, as you heard earlier tonight. There's just a few of the items. These are just a few of the items that we've worked on over the past plus years. In closing, before we go on with our regular agenda items, I would just like to say, given the inadvertent nature of this technical error, I'm not going to undo the election by resigning. Now, if I were to ask Mr. Chumperlin and Ms. Mortensen, are you resigning?
No.
No.
Okay. So instead, I feel, and I think I speak on behalf of the entire council, on behalf of all of us, and particularly three here, we continue to, we will continue to focus our efforts on working for the benefit of the residents of Minatrista to the best of our ability. So thank you all for coming. We appreciate your comments for and against us. And we will continue to work on your behalf. If you'd like to leave, you're welcome to. If you would like to stay, I encourage you to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
You wish that was all true.
No, we're going to be respectful, please. We are moving on with the meeting. So with that, we have Please try and leave the chambers as quickly as possible. Take your discussions outside, Please take your discussions out in the hallway. Thank you. Karen, Ms. Danielson. Ms. Danielson, you need to go out in the hallway or stay for the rest of the meeting? All right. Mr. Bushnell? Thank you. All right. With that, we move on to consent agenda items. They consist of A, approve our work session meeting minutes from June 17, 2019; B, approve our regular meeting minutes from June 17, 2019; C is approve our claims; D is approve our revised street standard detail plates; E is approve a variance for monument sign at West Tonka High School; F is accept donation of the red osier dogwood plants from the Gillespie, for the Gillespie Park. I would like to remove item number C, our claims. Are there any other items anybody wishes to remove?
Yes, I'd like to remove item E, the variance on the sign.
Any other items? All right. Hearing none, then. That remains A, work session meeting minutes; B, regular meeting minutes, revised street standard, and accept donation of the red osier dogwood plants. A, B, D, and F. Is there any motion to accept those or approve those?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Chumperlin to approve consent agenda items A, B, D, and F. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll take claims first. The only thing I want to remove is the payment, I think it's a $10,000 payment, to RAM. And what I'd like to do is bring that back when we have staff reports. I believe we're going to have a report regarding RAM.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So I just want, we don't need to have that discussion now, but I want to remove that from the claims. We'll bring it back when we have that discussion, and then we can either approve it or not approve it. So is that okay?
And the discussion on RAM will be under the update from staff reports.
Staff report.
You won't see it if you're quickly looking at the agenda and say, where's that? It's not on there.
It's under staff reports. And I just want to make sure that we're all clear what this is and why we're paying it. So with that, I would then be okay with approving the remainder of the claims. So I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of those claims.
I'll second.
Okay. I made the motion, and Ms. Bruce seconded that. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Ms. Bruce, you had the variance questions on that?
Yes. And I think it's just worth having a discussion about it. The digital display has, as we all know, is capable of changing every so often. And our city code, I clarified with Mr. Abel today, that it says that you can only change the sign once every five minutes. And I just wanted to have a discussion about it, because we have new young drivers that are going down that road. And the more, the more often that sign changes, the higher probability someone has of looking at it. And given the fact that these are young drivers going to high school that haven't been driving very long, they're easily distracted, I thought it was worth having a discussion about perhaps increasing that frequency change on the sign.
Sure. Valid point. Mr. Abel, so I was at the planning commission meeting when they approved this, and they had some similar issues. It's my understanding that they're not planning on changing it every five minutes. But it could be put in the variance request. But they just want to, they'll have the ability to change it, you know, like at an event change or whatever. But it wasn't my understanding from the presentation that it would be changing every five minutes. Mr. Abel?
Madam Mayor and Council, yeah, I think it's, this is obviously new to this school. And what they're used to is having to go out there and change the message on a weekly or a monthly type basis. So I don't know that they know for sure. But you're right, I don't think the intent is to change it every five minutes. What was discussed is a couple of times a day. What we have referenced as a condition is just what's directly out of city code. So certainly, if it's something council wants to discuss, that's what city code states right now.
That it can change every five minutes?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that might be a bit too frequent for the school and the drivers that are there, I understand.
Well, and I'm not suggesting we change the city code for all digital display signs.
Right.
I think that one in particular. And if they're only looking at changing it a couple times a day, maybe it's not an issue.
Yeah, I mean, that's their plan right now. Unfortunately, this isn't like a conditional use permit, where it's something you guys can revisit. Once a variance is approved, it's going to be out there and run with this permit, if you will. So I, you know, now would be the time to, if there's something you want to make different, now would be the time. It's not one of those, we can wait and see once it's, how big of a problem it is. I know that the district is certainly a good partner. They've been very amenable to working through these conditions through this whole process. So I can certainly share the concern with the school and the superintendent and let him know that, you know, as things progress, it's something we'd like to monitor, if that's the direction of the council.
I'm sure they have the same concerns that we do over the safety of the students.
Absolutely. Certainly, we met on site, actually, to your point, Council Member Bruce. Staff met on site with the superintendent to figure out what would be the best location for site visibility and exactly what you're talking about. So you're absolutely correct. I mean, they have the students' safety in mind as well.
I'm sure they would be amenable, I'm sorry, to making changes, should it become a problem. But Mr. Brony?
I was going to say, I had a chance to discuss this a little earlier today with Council Member Bruce, and brought up an example from the city my wife works for. And there, they have, you know, this is the only, just as an aside, this is the only dynamic sign we're going to have right now. We don't have any in the city right now, other than this one coming up. But get back to my issue, city of Minnetoka, they allow to change just once a day. I think that's a little on the extreme. And the explanation from that, as I found out a little later today, is that Minnetoka, being situated on 494, had a lot of billboards. And frankly, they were trying to get rid of some, because the sign company, it was Nagley or whoever, but they were trying to install some dynamic signs, big, I mean, big ones on 494 that you see are still there. So they did some trading, horse trading essentially, and say, okay, if you remove X number of signs, which they wanted to, you can have a dynamic sign, but it can only change every minute or whatever it is. So. And then they decided, we'll set an example and say, we're just not going to change ours but once a day, which is fine, because they don't do a ton of that type of advertising. They're better off driving people to the website, et cetera. They get more accurate, up-to-date info. But they got an event coming up, it'll, like we do, we rent a sign that says Trista Day on, you know, May whatever, and it's out there a week or two. So that's one that doesn't change. So I think it, all over the metro, you have different circumstances like that. So they could be five minutes, they could be 30 seconds. I don't know. It just depends on what city and how many dynamic signs they have and what their circumstance is. And so I think when we were talking a little earlier, you know, a couple of times a day, it seemed to be like an okay number, because they may have an event in the morning, an event in the afternoon, and that kind of thing. But
Well, and with the Performing Arts Center, they have, they have a lot more events now that they could, I could conceivably see them cycling through a lot of announcements on that sign pretty quickly. So I just want to make sure that it's addressed and that they know our concerns.
Yeah. We could, what we could do is approve the variance and then just let them know that we're concerned about it changing every five minutes and maybe making sure that they don't, I mean, I don't, because I don't know that we have an accurate way of saying how many times it should change a day, you know, or how often. I mean, I wouldn't know what to say. Can monitor it, too, if we have accidents.
Let's hope not.
Well, that's true.
It's hard to prove what an accident is caused from.
Right.
I would think if you brought it up to the school, they would know and have a good idea of how many times to change and get back to us on that.
The, that's true. The variance also, just so you know, the variance isn't for the sign, for the rotating of the sign. It's the distance to the road. So
It's the size.
It's, oh, I'm sorry. The size, yes. And they're moving it back further.
Correct. Again, that would be onsite meeting.
Right. So they could have a sign without a variance going, changing every minute, if that's what they wanted. But that's, yeah, every five, I'm sorry. That's not really, they were saying maybe a couple of times a day, two, three times a day.
Like I said, Madam Mayor, I think it's somewhat new. I mean, they're obviously excited for it. It sounds like it's all digital and computerized. So I think, too, from an accuracy standpoint, we can work with them to make sure they're abiding by this and hopefully more so than what ordinance allows for.
Right. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So are we in agreement to approve the variance?
Yes. I've moved to approve Resolution 83-19.
Okay. Is there a second?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortensen to approve the variance for the monument sign at the West Tonka High School. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we move on to our public hearings. This is ordinance number 455. It's an amendment to the Jennings Bay Villas PUD. This is a continuation of the public hearing from 617. Mr. Abel, I think you have an update for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Yes, we do and are asking the council to give one more extension on this public hearing. We've been working with the developer and the developer's engineer. And everyone is confident with the revised plans that have been submitted, that we could, can have this ready for your second meeting in August.
Is that August 19?
August 19, correct. So what we're asking you to do is to go ahead and just make one more motion again tonight, to go ahead and continue that public hearing for ordinance number 455 to the August 19 meeting, where we will have the public hearing before you and the rest of the information with the final plat, subdivision agreement, and so on, coming forth to the council. So the developer, a couple of things that have happened here. He has been out of town for a couple of weeks. The engineer that is working on it, on the developer's behalf, is overloaded with work. There's a lot of development going on. So there's a number of factors that have led to the delay. But this would be the last delay that we would be asking for from the council.
Yeah, I would say we wouldn't want to extend it anymore, and this is it. They don't come on the 19th, they lose their, they start over.
Correct.
So is the council in agreement with that? Any other comments?
I personally am out of patience with this, so I will be voting no.
Okay.
This developer has been, I'll say my comments.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Otherwise, is there a motion to amend the Jennings Bay Villas, or continue, I'm sorry, the public hearing for the amendment of the Jennings Bay Villas PUD to August 19?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Four ayes and one nay, and that was Mr. Maliter. So now we move on to our business items. This is approve a professional services agreement for Kings Point Road water main and street repair. This is being brought back to us based on some comments.
Madam Mayor, I apologize for going back to something previously in the agenda, but I forgot to make a comment on something that
Which was that?
It was on the consent agenda. It's about the standard detail plates.
Okay.
And I know we've passed that, or we've agreed to pass that. But one of the concerns that I had was taking the seal code escrow out of subdivision approval, because we're going to have increased costs associated with this, the cost of increasing the depth of the pavement. And I think we still need money in escrow to pay for that, because it replaces the need for the seal code. And you're saying no.
No, because the developer pays for the street.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. The developer pays for the thicker
So they are paying for this already.
Yes.
Right, right. So we're kind of, okay, you don't have to pay for it.
Yes. Okay. Good. All right. So now we all understand clearly. All right. All right. Now we'll move on. All right. Business items, approve professional service. I believe that's Ms. Fowski or Mr. Brony?
Ms. Fowski and then Mr. Gustafson are here. So Allison, if you want to go ahead, and Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Brony. As, there's a, there's a presentation included on the O-Drive, if we could bring that up while Mr. Gustafson comes up to the podium. Just to provide the council with a quick introduction to this, we discussed this item at the last council agenda with regards to the 20-inch water main on Kings Point Road and the break that occurred early March. Consistent with the feedback that was received at that meeting, we are presenting a proposal to go ahead and prepare the quote package, and also provides the construction administration at no cost to the city in an effort of good faith. We're looking at, you know, getting that out for quotes yet this year. And I asked Mr. Gustafson to come this evening to talk to the council a little bit more about why we're looking at a water main repair at this location. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Gustafson.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Gustafson, for coming.
Mayor Whalen, my pleasure. Council and Madam Mayor and city staff, once again, Lee Gustafson here with WSB to kind of help provide some background information with regards to the water main break and probably more importantly, about going forward as well. Here's some background information with regards to this break. As you know, it was installed in 2014. Allison, this is the second time. But as you know, it was, it was installed according to it was installed according to industry standards. Essentially, what that means is installed at about seven and a half, seven and a half feet deep, we had some separation between the water main and, and the culvert, and all water mains have to be not only pressure tested, they have to be biologically tested, a few other things. This water main passed all the, all the requirements, and there was no issue prior to the March 5th water main break. With regards to the water main break itself that occurred on March 5th, there was really no conclusive evidence of why it broke, and some things that can cause a water main break are frozen pipes, you have pipe settlement due to either shifting the soil, or sometimes poor compaction, you have pipe that could possibly be damaged during transport or installation, and you could, you could have a defective pipe. What you have out there is, is, in this area is a 20-inch pipe. 20-inch pipe carries a lot of water, as you can well imagine, and the water it's carrying is 45 degrees, and I wanna make that a point, 'cause generally, in my, I've been doing this a long time, I've really, I've never seen a pipe, with the exception of a residential service, freeze. So, you need to understand, this pipe is a 20-inch pipe, it's carrying 45, 45-degree wall water, at a very rapid pace. So, essentially, if you would take a full glass of ice, put it under a tap, under a lot of prep, a lot of volume, it melts very fast. So, I want you to understand this, when you have 45-degree water going in a 20-inch pipe, which is a lot of water, flowing pretty fast, instead of frost coming in, it actually heats the soil around it. So, it's, so you, so you have a lot of, water main breaks at eight inches, things like this, they're never associated with frozen pipes. So, what you have is a 20-inch pipe, and, which carries a tremendously amount of more water at 45 degrees than an eight-inch pipe does. So, it essentially is warming the soil versus allowing, allowing the frost to come in. So, to think that this pipe froze, I just can't fathom that. It could have been a com- it could have been a combination of something that happened up there. Unfortunately, as I told the city administrator, it could have been a perfect storm of two or three things that caused it to break. You had a new pipe, you don't have old cast iron, which a lot of cities have, it was just, you know, like, there's something we just can't, can't point our finger to. But hopefully, understand, with that much water going down, the likelihood of that pipe freezing is probably, is slim to none. So, even though it's, it is a possibility, if everything sat there and nothing moved for days, which your public works superintendent with that bigger, bigger water main, that just doesn't happen on something like that. So, hopefully, understand things like that, and I'll talk about that a little bit more so you have a better understanding. Here is, just to provide you some data about what happened prior to that water main break, here's the highs and lows, and it was cold. It was really cold out, and so, did you have, was the frost getting very deep in many places? You bet it was. And this kinda leads, leads up to that point, and hopefully, you can kinda see the highs and lows for the days, and it, it was, it was very cold leading up from a few weeks prior to that. We did do some information gathering, as far as other water main breaks in the areas. I'm the city engineer up in North Branch, so, I personally know there was two on February 28th on Highway 95 in North Branch, but they were just water, water main breaks, they weren't, weren't associated with any frost, any freezing, but they were just associated with normal types of water main breaks. In this case, it's all old-style pipe, cast iron, and cast iron can break for a variety of different reasons. Soil shifting, you turn up, you turn a fire hydrant off too fast, it can, it can, it can snap some water main breaks. There were several others, but I wanna point out that City of Minnetoka has about 50 a year. One year they had, one year, one year they had over 90. And so, it's just, I know the City of Minnetrista has newer water mains, things like this, but to put it in perspective, many cities deal with, in this case, 50, and only as much as, close to 100, and cities very close to you. I could imagine how many the City of Minneapolis and St. Paul have, with the old water mains that they have. With regards to the water main breaks that have, in general, I've seen water surfaces freeze. You have anywhere from a three-quarter inch pipe to a half-inch pipe, leading up to a small house, it doesn't move during the night. Sometimes it does move for days, the people are gone. That's generally when you have a frozen piece of pipe that's, that's a part of your water system, very small, very small pipe. When you get to the eight inches, six and eight inches and bigger, generally, they just, they just don't freeze. I got a great, ironically, I got a great example for you, for you. I also, I'm also a city engineer in Osseo, and they have a street reconstruction project that's going on this year, and the water main is only four and a half feet deep, eight inch, on a far end of the city, and we're, and it's being lowered because of not the water main freezing, but because of the water services are freezing. They've, as you know, the City of Osseo's fairly old, they have an older population, and they don't use a lot, a lot of water in their services, but this water main that is, that is eight inches, standard size, but only four and a half feet deep, the services have only froze approximately twice in 25 years. So, if you can imagine, eight inches, four and a half feet deep, your pipe was 20 inches big, 20 inches large, a lot of, a lot of water going through that, and, and seven and a half feet deep. If the pipe in Osseo, the water main has never froze, I just can't fathom that water main of that size. Even though you had a culvert that's 18 inches below it, many culverts are over, over and below all the water mains, you know, throughout the metro, and really throughout the world. So, are there very similar situations? You bet there are, but I just wanna give you an example, so, it's, it's my professional opinion that it was a, I think just a variety of things that happened to cause this water main break. Real quickly here, I'll show you, show you a few pictures, that's a water main break that was, that broke, there's a couple pictures there, you see how it was temporarily repaired with the bends going up and over the culvert, and, and so it could be put back in, back in service. As you know, there was a ton of frost, so to excavate any further, it would have been extremely costly to do, try to do a permanent repair at that time.
Thank you.
There's some bends put in there, and...
Mr. Gustafson, so, in this picture, my understanding is, the water line is going one way, and the pipe is going the other way. I had the opportunity to go out with Mr. Peterson, Superintendent, and so it made it a little clearer as to what was going on. Where in this picture does, can you show us the culvert? I'm not seeing it. Is it below, so we can't see it?
Yes, yes, so you see the, the black bends in the pipe, in the far-right picture?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can I just go up there?
Yeah, please.
See the bends here and there?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, it's right where the blue section is in the middle.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, the blue, yes, the blue section in the middle's, you know, the culvert is right below that.
Is below it.
You are right. You got the culvert going one direction, it's really a point.
Right, okay.
Going over the culvert. So, the culvert is really going 90 degrees to the right.
Right, okay. I just, I, that wasn't clear in my mind, so I, when I saw that with Mr. Peterson, I, I thought, oh, well, I kinda, okay, so I didn't know if the council was aware of that, all right.
Good question, thank you.
Thank you, all right.
So, what we're, what we're recommending is that we reinstall according to industry standards, industry specification, which it was, but we also add a little bit of insulation between the culvert, the storm sewer culvert, and, and the pipe. What that does is, it does two things, it, if there's any frost from the culvert trying to come up, it'll hold that down, but also actually retain the heat, a little bit that the pipe, that the pipe develops, so, with all the water going through it. So, it helps, it helps in both cases, it's just, I think, peace of mind that, that there shouldn't, shouldn't be any frost that comes out of that culvert, and comes up, and has any effect on, on the pipe whatsoever. Lastly, I want, just wanna point out that, as, as Allison pointed out, which is also in your resolution, WSB truly wants to partner with the city on this, and we are proposing that we prepare the plan specifications into all the construction administration at, at no cost to the city, so, we truly wanna partner with something that I couldn't even imagine happening.
Yeah.
With that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
So, thanks for the clarification, the information, in, you know, as I, as I listen and understand what you're saying, I certainly, it makes sense that it doesn't seem likely that it froze, and we're not totally clear on what actually caused it, but given the information about how this is basically a perpendicular intersection with the culvert, it would suggest to me that settling probably had something to do with it. I've had, I previously lived in Crystal, and all of our services in the area, I was on, were on pilings, 'cause we had sinking soil, and my house is on pilings, and we continually had problems with, the house stayed there, the services stayed there, and the ground in between would sink, and it snapped my sewer line, and I know the owners that have it now, and they just snapped the water line this year, because those two things stay there, and everything else moves. My concern about what we're looking at here is insulation, it, you know, makes sense, but I think it might be solving a problem that we just kind of agreed, probably doesn't exist, it's peace of mind, it's relatively cheap. What are your thoughts, though, about the necessity of possibly putting this pipe on pilings in this area? Is that overkill, or, you know, 'cause I don't think, if, if this is settling, obviously insulation isn't gonna solve the problem. And so, not that I'm gonna advocate for more expense, but, you know, we certainly don't wanna have this problem with...
Second time.
...we're on. So, what are, what are your thoughts on that? Is that overkill, or is that just not applicable, or what do you think?
Councilmember Maliter, I, in this case, I believe it's overkill, and hopefully, I'll explain it this way, it was, all this, all this destruction occurred back in 2014, and since 2014, you've had, if there was any settlement to occur, you've had five years for that settlement to happen. It's similar to when you, a developer comes in, paves a road, usually you get some settlement coming in, and you fix it, usually happens, hopefully, when the first year, generally within the second, third year, here, you've already had five years of settlement of the, of the complete area. We will make certain, we take particular attention to when that pipe is, is excavated, that we have great compaction where we're in the, in a repair area. So, I don't believe it's necessary that we need even consider providing any type of pipe support.
Okay.
The nice thing about the new pipes, they, they have some, they're not the old cast iron like you had in Crystal.
Right, right.
And that's what I dealt with my first 20 years, is old cast iron pipe. Ductile iron and PVC pipe have some ability to, to have a little point load, so, I just said, save your money, I think we'll be, I think we'll be in good shape here.
So, we don't think there's underlying soil conditions that need to be remedied, or anything of that nature?
Nope.
Okay, I just, I just wanna make sure that we've kinda thought about all of that.
And I sympathize, I understand what you own in Crystal, I sympathize with you.
Miss, I believe Ms. Bruce has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, if, it, it, it sounds to me like this, if it wasn't freezing, and it wasn't settling, it was probably a defective pipe or damaged during installation, and my question is, doesn't WSB carry errors and emissions insurance to cover things like this, and what kind of a warranty do we have? You mentioned these other cities that had water main breaks, but you didn't say the age of those pipes that were in there, I think what's at issue here is, this was recently installed, and, and I think mentioning those other cities, because we don't know when they were installed, we don't know how, how old they were, how young those pipes were, but my, my question is, we appreciate the willingness to absorb the engineering costs, but this is $78,000, plus we also had the cost of our public works crew out there doing all that repair during the winter, and it, it seems to me like WSB, their insurance ought to pay for the $78,000 of the, the break. If, if it was a defective pipe or damaged during installation, those seem to be things that would be covered by insurance.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bruce, the errors and emissions is for design faults. As I mentioned, this was designed according to industry standards. WSB, or any, any one of your firms, anywhere you work, you can't be liable for something that's produced 3,000 miles away. You don't know the manufacturing process, nor do you know the companies that hauled it there, what, what they did, what they did to those pipes. There's nobody that would actually insure something like that, so, I, I understand your concern, it is $78,000, and I, I understand that. That's, there's many other examples I could give you, you could have, you could have a brand-new car, that engine goes out, well, and it's past warranty. General Motors, or Ford, or anybody else isn't gonna give you a new engine because of, they designed it. Similar to here, we did exactly what we followed, industry standards, and if we wouldn't have, or if we completely slipped up and had something else, that's what our errors and emissions coverage, we, we, nobody's insurance is gonna cover how the pipe was made, how it was transported, and, and we, we're not, you know, even though we're, we're there watching everything, there could have been a rock that, that, that came in that we didn't see, and those, those types of situations happen, so, without pinpointing it and being able to go after the manufacturer, the transporter, it's just hard, it's hard to put, put blame on, on anything.
Mr., did you, does that answer your question, sir? So, I did ask our public works superintendent as well, when we were out there, well, was it installed correctly? He feels it was, so my question is, are we gonna go to the same manufacturer for the same pipe again?
Mayor Whalen, the pipe that you put in is a very good pipe, and I, and I commend, because of the problems with some of the soils, the PVC pipe is a very good pipe, because corrosive soils didn't, does not...
Corroded, okay.
...attack it. So, what you're having, I'll, I'll tell you right now, I live in Maple Grove, by water main is only less than, about 20 years old. There's already, already problems with it. The bolts, the bolts are corroding off, they're having to dig every water valve, they're having to dig every hydrant, they're having to dig up everything within the street, and it's only 20 years old. And, but because it's, it's, it's an iron, it's, it's an iron, and they didn't specify better bolts. Here, you've got PVC, you've got, you've got everything, you did everything right, as far as, as far as specifying the type of materials to, to limit problems down the road.
Right, yeah. Mr. Brony, did you?
Well, I just, yeah, the only thing I wanted to say is, the, the extra insulation is great, and I, the one thing I spoke about with Lee is, and Allison, is, you know, if we have a project in the future, you know, maybe we, you may see something about proposed insulation, because it crosses over a culvert, we may throw that in there, just for, again, for some peace of mind. Don't know if it'll really help, but it may make us feel like it's helping, and then the fact that, you know, we have a cost of this, I kinda feel that's just kind of cost of doing business here at the city. You are gonna have failures with things, no matter what it is, whether it's a computer, or a pipe, or whatever, my car, squad car, there are things that are just going to fail. You try to have a maintenance schedule, for pipes, not a maintenance schedule, but, you know, for things that you can prevent, you try to prevent them, but there is a cost just to doing business, and that's unfortunately, our cost this time with this pipe.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, we really appreciate you coming, number one, and number two, WSB's willingness to collaborate with us and to offer these services at no charge, it's very big of you. Thank you very much, really appreciate it. Council, what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as stated in Resolution Number 77-19.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, is there any other questions or comments?
I would just also like to reiterate my appreciation of WSB for, for being proactive on this, and being a good partner with us, you know, in relation to Ms. Bruce's concerns. I, I share the same concern, but there's also a reasonable list as to how far you go with, you know, can we prove, you know, where the exact issue is, and that gets to be a lot more difficult and a lot more expensive, and I think this represents a, a good solution to, to the problem that we have, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Otherwise, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, we'll move on to administrative items, staff reports, so, city... I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Trillium, Trillium Way, the medians, Mr. Brony, I believe that's you.
Yeah, I thought I'd put this into the city council packet, I kinda thought maybe it's a staff report, but I wanted to have council's approval, and just kinda talk a little bit about the meeting. So, we met back in late June, on June 25th, we had a couple of members from the Trillium area, Homeowner Association, and we talked about... area, homeowner association, and we talked about how, in concept, the idea of having these center island medians with the split in it seemed like a good idea back in the day when Woodland Cove was being developed, and they heard, the neighbors in that area heard that there's going to be 1,000-plus units, and they said they didn't really want people driving through their area, so a council back then, city council, said, let's put in these islands. Now, they didn't get installed till roughly a year ago, and in that year, I've heard lots of complaints from my public works guy especially, and then also our police chief, about how they're not really operating like they should. So, they made the road width 10 feet, the plows are 12 feet, right there, we've got a problem. They have a wing on the plow, so that also makes it even harder, so right now, what they're doing is they're coming back with a, a plow on the front end of a pickup truck and plowing this intersection. So, we met with them, the two people from Trillium were, didn't really want to see their center islands disappear, but understood our problem, and so we came up with the option of removing the center islands, medians, and then painting the exact same dimension that they're, they hold now as concrete, but just paint them onto the street in the future, once the final lift is done, add a couple of no-left-turn signs, so that people traveling east on Lotus Drive will know not to turn left and onto Trillium Way. And so, we could do some maybe other, other things in the future, but we said we would monitor it, they were fine with that option. Got a couple of things still at work, we don't know how fast Woodland Cove will develop, we know it's growing, but it's nowhere close to finished, and then County Road 44 right now is under construction, so it's really not a good time to evaluate the impact of traffic in that, from that road, because it's not even operational at the moment. So, they're fine with it, so I just wanted you guys to be able to give us your approval to go forth, and we've contacted the developers, construction company, they're aware of it, so our city crews will be taking up the concrete median and patching it, and then when they roll out the final lift, then we'll work with them on making sure that it gets painted appropriately, so. They were very receptive, even though I think they weren't going to be when they walked in the door that day, so they understood our dilemma.
Any questions? Do you, you don't really need approval from the council, or would you like...
I am asking through the resolution to...
All right, I'm sorry.
For approval to remove the center island medians, and then we'll end up contacting the, the two representatives from Trillium, letting them know. We don't have an exact timeline when they're coming on, O'Garry's been working with the developer, this construction company about when, I think, is it maybe August, they're going to put the final...
...first week, obviously paid, and so...
Yeah, so...
...between that and now, or for them to have approval.
Right.
We'll take them, or put first base, what base, or soon, they just pay.
They'll pay over time.
Yeah, okay. All right, any, any questions, staff?
I just want to say, I think, I appreciate that you met with the homeowner association to help make, you know, this whole thing resolved and partner up with them.
Thank you.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve a resolution to remove the center island medians on Lotus Drive and Trillium Way intersection?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So, now, I think we move on to staff reports.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council, I've got a couple of items. First, a reminder, our next meeting is three weeks from tonight, we have five Mondays in July, so that moves our, sort of a two-week gap here, we have a three-week. I did get a call last Thursday from Chris Remus, who's the engineer with, at council, and as you recall, we had a number of residents here a while ago saying they were concerned about their well water, well, he reported back that the well testing has been completed. Didn't say how many, I'm sure there's probably a few residents that said no, but I think most people took them up on the offer to get their, their water tested from their own wells, and so that is at the lab right now, and they expect that the results will be available to those residents by the end of this month, so that's a status update on that. And then, just an upcoming, so as Councilmember Mortensen just mentioned, and we met with people, so we have, I have a meeting coming up with Mr. Eric Funderburke, who's discussed the short-term rental issue with, in his neighborhood, so we have, I've got a meeting set up with him, I've got other staff members coming as well, we're going to discuss his concerns about the short, short-term rental issue. He seems, he still has his concerns of what's going on at the home next to him, so we're going to hear his concerns, and we'll probably be back to the council at some point in August to discuss something. I don't know if that'll be another closed session, or it'll be just an updated staff like this, or what, but we'll, we're scheduled to meet with him this week on Wednesday.
And Paul will be there too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is, is that the same house that is threatening litigation?
Yeah, he lives next door.
That's the home, correct, so.
Who's doing the update on Ram?
Uh, it would be the city engineer, and kind of all of us, but...
All right.
She's, she's coming up, so I think...
All right.
Are you done?
I'm done, yes, Mayor.
Okay, then we have Director of Administration, Mr. Abel, um, no, I'm sorry, because Ms., Dave.
That's all right, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to provide an update following our work session regarding internet access for residents and seeing what we could do to provide additional resources. So, what I did, and it's, I have not made it live yet, I just wanted to discuss it with you first and see if you had any other additional feedback, but I put together a webpage that will allow residents to see what the current offerings are that we're aware of. That'll allow us then to update that as we become aware of this. We had a resident reach out to the city and a couple of the council members about a week or so ago, letting us know that they had utilized a resource out of Duluth that they felt worked well to provide them with internet for their business, which was at home, and we do have residents who, one of their big concerns is not just everyday internet access, but business access as well. So, as we are made aware, whether by providers or by residents, that there are resources, I'll add that, and then I provided email and phone contact information as they advertise. So, as long as their information is accurate, ours will be accurate, and then we'll just update that as we become aware of changes or, or things that are coming down the line for people. So, if you're comfortable with that, that's something that I wanted to put live on the website, so that residents had that next step follow-up.
I think that's a good idea, just another service we can offer our residents.
Yeah, that's great.
I'm sorry. I did talk to Cassandra about this also, and I know we have a couple people that are continually coming and complaining, if we could reach out to them particularly and tell them about this new thing that we're doing with our website.
Yes, thank you, and I should have mentioned that. So, not only will I make sure that we're putting that information out the same way we do with alerts and a news, a news posting Facebook to let people know that this new page exists, which is something we always do, but then as people are calling in, and those who've been struggling up until this point, we'll do proactive outreach, once that's made live tomorrow. So, yes, anything we can do just to help give people resources and waylay some of the emotion.
Thank you. Okay, any other...
One last item was to discuss the August 5th for the presentation of our two new employees.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's on August 5th. So, our, our new public works employee started, and then our new building inspector has started, the building inspector started just a little bit before the public works, but they will be here the first week in August, is the plan currently, so that you can be introduced to them.
All right, good.
We thought maybe tonight's meeting wasn't the best meeting to introduce.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Abel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of quick updates. So, as you saw, I sent you all an email regarding the Red Oak PUD adjustment, they did withdraw their request to adjust the, make that adjustment for the PUD, and since then, two of the property owners did apply for a variance, and so we've publicized that and sent out public hearing notices. That will be at the July 22nd Planning Commission meeting, which leads me to, I do need a council member to attend that meeting, so that's my first question, I have one other update after that, so if I could get someone...
What's the date again?
July 22nd.
Mr. Chumperlin, have you been, or Pam, who's?
I did attend one, but...
I can take it.
You can take it, okay, because I know, I don't think you've been...
Since November, I think.
Okay, you're on.
Sounds great. My other update is also, this was in part of your informational packet back on June 17th, there was a letter with some correspondence and a permit on Turtle Road for a deck, if the council will recall. Just wanted to give you a quick update, that the deck has been completed, inspected, and has, has passed code, so some, some good news there, a long project that did get completed and does meet the minimum standards for Minnesota State Building Code, so just wanted to give you an update on that, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, good, thank you. That was a pretty awful-looking deck.
A lot of wonder being dried.
Yeah, really, let's see. Any others, city engineer, Ms. Valski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If it works for the council, Madam Mayor, I'd like to go over the pay voucher that was included in the consent agenda and address why that was included. So, the pay voucher was just over $64,000, and the majority of that pay voucher was for topsoil, as you may recall, a while ago, I can look at the date, but there was a change order approved for the price of topsoil, and so the bulk of that, of this $64,000 pay voucher is that change in price of topsoil of what was previously paid, that was the bulk of it.
Just, Clay, it's on page 36, it's $60,803,05, so...
Thank you.
So, a little less than what you were saying, just wanted to...
Right, I took off, I didn't take off the retainers, thank you for the clarification. So, the bulk of it was with the topsoil, and then the remainder was, there was some erosion control, erosion control items on that, on that pay voucher, some seed mix that was also included on that pay voucher as well, for work that was done last year.
Okay. Any questions? So, my concern, of course, has always been, do we still have money in, in our pocket, so to speak, to, for the...
Liquidated.
Liquidated damages? And how does that work? So, this doesn't include, so we pay everything that they, that we owe them, and then we collect, or we keep, if you will, the liquidated damages?
Go ahead.
Mr. Beatty?
Well, so he's unaware of the bill, but he could talk about liquidated damages, but nonetheless, we have enough money available for the liquidated damages, the clock is still ticking, they know that, we reminded them that, and so I think maybe at this point, I'll give you an update, because the last time we met in June, we had the council authorize the city to send them a letter and say we wanted to cancel the contract. So, we did do that at the council's request and send it to them, and I think within a day or so, we got a response from an attorney that the construction company has hired and challenging us on that.
Is he getting paid?
I know, yeah. And then say they would, so we had a good chuckle, because they said they would like an attempt to fix it, and it's like, well, how about the last two years, you know? But nonetheless, we discussed it with both the engineers and the attorneys, both Mr. Beatty and Mr. Strumman, and we did have some stipulations, and one of the stipulations were, and this is the week before the 4th of July, we said we want to meet on-site and come up with a game plan, and so Allison and, and Adam, Gary, not Adam?
Not Adam.
Not Adam, I thought it was Adam, but that's all right. And Gary went out there and met the representatives from Ram, and they put together a listing, I know she's got the chronological, so eventually, the meeting was held, they sent us a list of things that they said they would do, they still had one item as of last Thursday before you left that they were still struggling with, if you recall, and I didn't know if you have an update on that, because I haven't had a chance to talk with you before tonight's meeting, but it was a subcontractor or something.
Yes, so when we met on-site, the subcontractor, TARA, that's the party responsible that, that Ram hired to do the restoration work, and so one of the, some feedback that we've received from Ram is that this TARA subcontractor wants payment in full for all these requested items, and so we've been going through diligently on what items WSB has measured in the field and have requested for TARA to provide the paperwork that supports the quantity they're requesting. Looking through it further, and actually just before the meeting tonight, there's, I, I think we're getting very close on that, so I don't anticipate that there would be any issues with TARA and the quantities that they're requesting versus what we've measured, so I remain hopeful that, and I've requested from Ram, are we able to get TARA back out here, based on what we've presented in pay voucher 10, which would be a payment to TARA, as well as what we discussed in the field back on June 28th.
So, we're getting close, but as far as finishing the project, I should say, but we still have a ways to go with the liquidated damages, and I think we're fine on that regard, so. It's in their best interest to complete this, because like I said earlier, we've informed them numerous times throughout the last six months and, and recently, that the liquidated damages clock, so to speak, is ticking.
Is still ticking. So, the only other thing, are they, have they removed all of the black logs and, and fencing and silt fencing and stuff?
So, that, not to date, because that's the TARA, the subcontractor.
Okay, well, is there a date for them to finish this, then?
Yes, so Ram provided a schedule, and since then, they, Ram has been out on the site, they've cleaned the culverts, they've moved the curb stop down at 7,400 Palsted, they raised a gate valve, and they picked up some trash and debris that was on the site. They've also provided a schedule for the remaining work and indicated that the remaining items would be completed by the end of July, that includes their subcontractor, TARA. And items that are not included to be completed by the end of July, there's some areas that need to be either seeded for the first time or reseeded, and we're just in that, this hot weather right now, where it's, we're outside those seeding dates, and so those are put on the schedule for late August, once those seeding dates come back in.
Okay.
It's the wrong time to seed.
Yeah, obviously, but it would have been a better time last year or last fall.
Oh, we know that, yeah, they know.
All right, all right, any other questions, or...
Madam Mayor, if I may, so I believe since the pay voucher was removed from the consent agenda, is there an action that needs to be...
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
So, pay voucher number, which, which number was it, I'm sorry?
Pay voucher 10.
Okay, pay voucher 10. Any other questions of the council? Is there a motion to approve pay voucher 10 to Ram Construction?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second, then.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, that concludes, I believe, our staff reports.
No, the only other thing is, as we move into the budget season, our time for discussion of other topics on the upcoming work sessions in August are, are going to be tough, so it's been a while, a few weeks since we've met, so we've got a roads meeting coming up this Wednesday, and then when we get to our next meeting in August, we may have, actually, instead of having a work session on it, we may have to bring that to the council and just conduct our business and talking about roads during the council meeting. The budget is, you know, kind of a priority, obviously.
Because of timing.
Because of timing, and so we want to make sure that we don't get behind on the roads, and so we're probably, you'll probably be seeing that as a discussion item in the city council meeting, may not be something we vote on, but we, we will have to spend some time on it, so.
Okay, yeah, we definitely, unless you want to start earlier.
Yeah, as Brian was just saying to me, so we've got, we could start a little earlier, but we already got a couple of things besides, we got the budget, and then we've got the assessor.
Yeah, we're going to have the assessor's office come and talk about just some of the, couple of different things, I mean, some of the activity, the level of activity in the, in the city, and then as far as they're going to talk about, they honored their contract for this year, what they had estimated, but they under, they underestimated, so they want to come and talk about their proposed increase based on the parcel contract.
For next year, 20, so they're going to honor their current, I think it's 144?
Yeah, 144,000, yeah, so that's a piece that obviously ties into budgeting, but I think it's good timing.
Okay, is Atchison coming?
Jim Atchison.
Yeah, okay.
So, I think we wanted to start at 5:00.
Yep.
Is everybody available at 5:00?
August 5.
Versus 5:30?
I'm available.
I'm available.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, 5 o'clock, our next council work session starts, all right. That'll be posted?
Yep.
Assuming, all right. So next we move on to council reports. We'll start on that end.
Okay. Before I get into council reports, did everybody get the email from the complaint about Hardscrabble Road?
Right.
And has staff responded to her?
No, well, not yet, but either myself or staff will respond. So basically, whenever we get an email that's addressed to all of us, either, you know, I talk with Mike, so either I respond or Mike will respond because you can certainly respond individually, but she may get different, you know, different things. So basically, we're just going to respond and let her know it's still under discussion.
I just wanted to make sure that she was getting a response. I missed the St. Bonnie Fire Advisory Board meeting in May, but I wasn't the only one, so did everyone else. So we, I think we're having some communication issues with St. Bonnie and I've requested that they schedule another meeting between now and our next meeting because no one, the notice evidently didn't make it to the people that were supposed to be there. But they did send me the minutes to, and the packet from the May meeting and they have a proposed 2020 budget that's identical to their 2019 budget. So maybe that's why no one showed up.
Couldn't be.
But anyway, we're asking them to schedule another meeting because I think it's important, especially if you've got budgets to approve, that we have those discussions when people are, that represent the cities and towns are there. That's all I have.
Mr. Chumperlin?
Attended the June 20th Pioneer Sur Creek watershed, fairly short agenda, nothing relevant to us. The July 18th has been canceled due to lack of an agenda and Chairman Baker is in the process of creating a subcommittee trying to get all the cities involved in this to discuss the change in technical advisory beam. We no longer will have Hennepin County.
Right.
We'll change our engineering costs, but he's trying to get some brainstorming done to see what's the best option as of January 1.
Okay.
I have volunteered, we can only have two commissioners on that. I volunteered, I haven't heard back yet, so.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Mr. Maliter?
The LMCD meeting, the first one of the month of July was canceled, so I have no reports on that.
Okay. And Ms. Mortensen?
The WCC meeting for July, there is no meeting in July. Spirit of the Lakes is happening though this weekend and they do need volunteers. And, oh, the newsletter, I got it and it don't look great, by the way, but I have a question about the carp barrier. Is there some way of ever finding out and when the success of this whole project?
We could probably talk to MCWD, I'm sure. They would be more than happy to share the statistics.
I was just curious, I mean, did you?
Last time I spoke with them, they didn't have anything yet compiled, but I can definitely reach out to the contact and see if we have updated information.
I'm sure they'll, they'll have some statistics.
Yeah.
Eventually, I just don't know when, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The articles were good.
All right. So I did attend the Regional Council of Mayors meeting. It was very informative and interesting. It really talked about our future workforce and it was a collaboration between the mayors and school districts for this session and we talked about how cities and school districts can work together to collaborate on our future workforce because we are showing currently tens of thousands of shortage in our workforce and they project out having over 300,000 shortfall in our workforce with retirees and people going elsewhere. So it was very interesting. I did share an idea with Mr. Falls, maybe we can see if that can come to fruition because I know we've talked about changing our police academy and including young people, so I gave him some ideas there. And then also, interestingly enough, the very next day, I got a call from a resident asking if their son, who is in college, could actually come and, what do you call it, shadow some of our workers here at City Hall, which is another great idea too, so that we can introduce them to potential future work environments and so on. So I also attended the meeting with the Trillium Bay homeowners, went very well. And I also will be attending the June 17th meeting with the gentlemen out on the island regarding the short-term rental and we'll be bringing that back to council. There is no meeting in July or August for the Northwest League. And then National Night Out is August 6th this year, I believe? So I'm sure you'll send out a notice for those that want to participate, so.
Yes, we'll do that, sure.
Okay, thank you. I believe that's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.